It's 5:02 and I'm calling this meeting, regular meeting to order and today's date is Monday, August the 28th. Ms. Anna, can you establish quorum?
Yes ma'am. Mayor Norrie Gonzalez-Garcia.
Present.
Councilwoman Jessica Alfera.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilwoman Avielle Flores.
Present.
Councilwoman Alberto Vela.
Present.
Mayor, we've established quorum.
Okay, thank you so much. The next item is invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Yes, we're going to have everyone please stand. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your grace and goodness. May your spirit continue to shine upon us here in the city of Mission so that your ways may be known in our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated.
Okay, the next item is the disclosure of conflicts of interest. Was there anything filed?
No ma'am.
No? Okay. Thank you. The next item is the proclamation for Tiger Fury.
Mayor, council, good afternoon. I'd like to call up Mr. Garcia and his students up. This proclamation is on their behalf. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Kajikumbo is a hybrid American mixed martial arts founded in Hawaii in 1947, the core principles are the development of mind, spirit, and body. Kajikumbo was brought from Hawaii to mainland America by early pioneers of the system who earned their black belt rank from emperado. And whereas it was brought to the city of Mission by Luis Garcia, who after years of hard work and dedication to the art, developed some of the best fighter and noteworthy martial artists, teachers, masters, and grandmasters. At the 2023 Open Martial Arts Tournament held in Las Vegas, Nevada in July, Tiger Fury's Mission students, Susie Mendez, Regina Moreno, and Marco Montes each received one grand champion medal. And Harley de Agarza received two grand champion medals with a combined total of 23 world champion gold medals, 16 silver medals, and 16 bronze medals. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby congratulate and commend Tiger Fury Self-Defense Institute Headquarters for their 60 world champion titles from the 2023 Open Martial Arts Tournament held in Las Vegas, Nevada, proclaiming on this the 28th day of August, 2023.
Okay. So Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Proclamation as read. Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Good afternoon. I just want to say thank you so much for being here and also I want to mark something real quick before, we have really little time. From 2019, 2022, and 2023, we've been taking students to Kumpia, Las Vegas for the past three years. And our goal was to reach 200 world titles. For these three years, students from Mission, from Alden, from other, from Academy also, we're working really hard to take these students to Kumpia, Las Vegas. And so far in these three years, even though we had COVID, we made 227 world titles in three years.
Very good. Congratulations.
And this is credit for Mission because our school was here before we moved. But I want to say thank you for the bottom of my heart, for, you know, for the support. And I know all the time we come here, you guys always, we feel home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Yes. Look.
Oh, no, 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 no. You can.
Oh, no.
There you go. Okay, now we're kind of even.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And good luck in the future.
We hope so.
Very good.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Love's dedication.
Yes, I think.
Okay, the next item is the presentation of Parks and Recreation TAF athletes. Mr. Benson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. You know, it's really with great appreciation and thank yous to making our Texas Amateur Athletic Federation Summer Program what it is. You know, our program has grown and grown and grown. Our numbers are great and our participation is. It's busy, keeping them occupied and keep them healthy and keep them mentally alert. But, you know, through the years, it's grown. And it's really, it's a great program that the kids look forward to every year. And we couldn't do it, it wouldn't be possible without your help and support for it. This year with our 2023, we would call it TAF, Texas Amateur Athletic Federation Program, we had a total competing in the track and field program. We had 171 children and youth. With our swim program, we had 185 children and youth. In our tennis program, we had 60 children and youth. This year, we were really extinguished. I'd like to ask Valeria Garza and Hidato Lotayas to come forward. I don't know if they know it yet, but they've been recognized as local athlete of the year. Valeria? You know, we have to pry a little bit of information out of them, but I don't know. Y'all know y'all getting an award? Yeah, okay. Valeria got first place in six awards, six or five? Six, okay. She had first in 200-yard medley. She got a first in the 100-yard freestyle. She had first in the 50-yard breaststroke, first in the 50-yard fly, first in the 50-yard free, freestyle, and second in the 200-yard freestyle medaling. You know, I can't even swim a lap anymore. Really embarrassed. After a scuba program, I was great to do two miles and I was enjoyed, I enjoyed swimming, but I definitely need to get back out there again. But I honor you and I thank you for what you're able to do to represent our city. Now she's going into weightlifting and she's going to start doing curls. Come on, show us your hand there. It's a new thing that they started this year. Instead of weight, they're necks down, they started putting rings on their fingers. On the other hand, Hidato Lotayas, he set another state record. Seems every year Mission is able to excel and we're able to set one or two records. And since I've been here, I think there's been two years where we haven't set a record, but Hidato was able to set the state record this year with the 50-yard freestyle. It's not a whole, what's a quarter second amount too in the swimming pool? Here to there? Yeah, but, you know, a difference of one second or five seconds is really a great amount, but, you know, quarter second. But that was a state record that he set in the 50-yard freestyle. The old record that he broke was set on July 29th in 2021. Okay. Hidato also got a first place in 200-yard freestyle and also a first place in 50-yard breaststroke. But anyway, with that, I'd like to be able to give you guys your plaque. Valeria? Yours? Hidato?
Yes, I think there's more.
Okay.
You want to do two separate pictures?
Yeah, probably better.
Okay.
Because we have the rest of the athletes, right?
Yes. You want to go up front?
Yeah, here for them because it's only. I have two mighty heavy rings there. So you can send them to your. Wow. This is cool. Right? Get him.
Okay, there you go. You know, it's really, it takes a lot out of the parents. I know it takes a lot out of the kids to complete the summer program, but I do thank the parents for staying in the summer with them. I know some of them will miss summer vacation, some of them will miss the workouts so they can go on summer vacation. But it's a long program, it's an enduring program. This year when we went and competed in the Games of Texas, we're able to do it here locally. We had this first year in Brownsville, next year we'll also be in Brownsville. The year after that, I think we're going back up to College Station, which makes travel a little bit more fun. But anyway, in swimming, we received an overall 47 first-place awards. We received 22 second-place awards, and we received 10 third-place awards. In tennis, we had four second-place. We had one boys 14 and under in singles. We had one girls placed 16 and under in doubles. We had one girls 18 and under in doubles and one in singles. We had two third-place awards for the boys. We had one boys 1400 in singles and one girls 1800 in singles. So we started out with 60 tennis players, but out of the 60, 67 wanted to compete and placed well in state. Track and field, we tried something different this year. We've, and it's always been a different program. I know Mission's small, but in Mission, we have three school districts, and also with Academy. So we're servicing Mission, we're servicing Sheraland. And it's always hard to determine which way to go because some students don't have the ability to travel. And so it's, when I came here, all the, our TAF, track and field programs were running in Mission. And we left Sheraland to the behind. And anyway, we swapped it out and we changed it. We wanted to go back and forth between Sheraland and Mission, but last year, or two years ago, we started in Sheraland. And when it was, Mission's turn last year, we weren't able to go over there because their stadium was under construction. This year, though, we did morning program. We split. We went to Sheri North because Richard Thompson Stadium was under construction. And then we went to the west to, in the morning program for Tom Landry Stadium. And in the afternoons, all the schools converged on Tom Landry Stadium. But, you know, it's great to see that much blood, sweat, and tears out there on both the fields. We're really grateful to the school districts, or they should be grateful for us because we're training their kids to prepare them for UIL competition next year. Anyway, we had numerous places in fourth, fifth, sixth, eighth, and ninth in our various tracks and track and field programs. tracks and track and field programs this year. But it's great, honored to be part of the team and I'm really happy for what all of our swim, tennis, and track was able to do this year. Some of the kids, a lot of the kids are in school, school started already. It's always difficult to get them out here, but I was able and quite honored to get some of the coaches here and some of the parents were able to bring their kids out here. But anyway, I'd like for them to come forward, to be recognized. If y'all can come this way? They're shy. Come on. You want to come on this step?
Everyone gets smiling.
Right, so we rise. Five. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Beth.
She's been sleeping since she was three, she said. Okay, the next item, the agenda is a report from our Rio Grande Valley Humane Society.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to update on some of the great work that we've been doing. First of all, I want to really extend a special thank you to the City of Mission's social media team. They've been fantastic promoting our great work and our partnership. And I think it's a large part, a large contributor to the fact that we've been able to increase adoptions by over 180% over last year. So again, thank you, that's, it's incredible and it's because of our partnership. And so again, we're really grateful. I think they're at the shelter more often than I am, so that's awesome. Just to highlight a few bigger numbers, we've taken in over 1,500 animals at the shelter just in the last six months. And August marks the six-month mark of our partnership. And so we're getting a ton of animals out the street, we're getting them into adopted homes, and most excitingly, we're getting a lot of them spay neutered. In fact, tomorrow, we have a transport to our clinic over at our other location. We're still planning on building a full-service veterinary clinic onsite here in the City of Mission. And hopefully, very soon, we'll be hitting the 2,000 to 3,000 mark for spay neuters right here in town locally. But as of today, we've already hit the 500 mark for surgeries just for animals from the City of Mission. So we're proud to offer that low-cost service for people in the community. And, excuse me, I'm so sorry. So our next clinic for vaccines is to be announced. It will be here at the City of Mission location. And we are expecting at least 500 spots to be opened up for City of Mission residents. So again, a lot of really good news to highlight, a lot of really great, great progress has been made. And again, thank you to City of Mission for affording us this opportunity to save lives and serve our community. And if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer. But if not, again, thank you for this opportunity to keep saving lives and look forward to doing even more next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quintanilla, Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure. Thank you for being so patient and waiting.
Unfortunately, I was out of town when you all had your adoption. How did that event go? And congratulations, I've heard a lot of wonderful things.
Yes, everything has been going really well. In fact, we plan on doing more and more adoption events here in the city, out, you know, beyond just the shelter. We just renewed our partnership with the Petco location here in town, so we plan on being in the community more and more. We actually increased our team by a few people in the last few months. And we just recently hired a development director, so we plan on being pretty much everywhere and that we possibly can be, every business, every restaurant, everywhere that we can possibly put animals on display. We plan on getting out there in the community a lot more than we already have, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is a report from our chamber. Ms. Brenda?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So wonderful things happening in Commerce. So on this Wednesday, we will be celebrating the first-ever Starbucks coming here off Conway. It's gonna be at 9:00 a.m. It'll be a ribbon-cutting celebration, so please come out and join us. We're really excited about Wednesday, we do have an educational session on human resources, hot topics, and red flags. It is a webinar event for our small communities. And the Board of Directors ballots that have gone out, so far, we've collected a total of 30 ballots. Last year, we had about 60, in the 60s number ballots collected. So just a reminder, they're due on August 31st at 11:00 a.m. An email will be sent to those that haven't received a ballot. On Thursday, September 7th, we do have a member networking mixer happening at Suerte off of Sheri. We do have a lunch and learn for our members and non-members. They're welcome to join us and it'll be a small fee for their lunch, but it's scheduled at the C Building for September 15th. And it's with Professor Maria Leonard with UT RGB Business of School. And the topic is emotional intelligence. And lastly, we are getting ready for the GMCC Annual Member and Citizens Award. It was since 2020 that, 2019 was the last time we did it together with Progress Times, where we came together and combined them that evening. So we've picked it up already, just picked up right where we left off. So it's dated for October 12th. Next Wednesday, the nominating committee will announce our Mission Chamber Business Awards, which is for the Business Leader of the Year, Business of the Year, and Community Impact Awarding. Progress Times, they will announce Man of the Year, Woman of the Year, Mr. Mission, and First Lady of Mission, and that'll be the night of the event. So exciting things happening. And the theme this year is A Night of Disco.
Oh, boy.
So it should be fun. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. All right, so the next item were the departmental reports, those were in our packets. Are there any questions or comments? Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the reports as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is citizens' participation. Ms. Anna, was anyone?
Yes, ma'am. We have Mr. Aaron Bagheen, and it's on Agenda Item 23.
Okay. 23. Did you don't, if you're just here to answer questions?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Well, we had an item in the
On the agenda, okay. And it's a preliminary plat approval, right?
Yes, I'm correct.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bagheen.
Anyone else?
No.
No, okay. We'll move on to the public hearing. And the first item is a rezoning. Actually, there's track, there's two tracks. And Ms. Suzie?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilman, and City Manager. Item number seven is a rezoning for track number one. It's a nine-acre track of land, more or less out of lot 236 Johnny Sheri subdivision. And track number two, a one-acre track of land, more or less out of lot 236 Johnny Sheri subdivision. This is from AOI Agricultural Open Interim to R1 Single Family Residential. The applicant is Elite Development 786 LLC in care of M2 Engineering. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located a quarter mile south of East Griffin Parkway, along the west side of Taylor Road. Surrounding zones include residential to the south and west, multifamily to the north, City of McAllen is to the east, which they have residential. Existing land uses include residential to the west and south, the senior Taylor Village to the north. The site is currently vacant. The future land use map shows this area as low-density residential. This 10-acre track is mostly surrounded by single-family residential, with the exception of the Taylor Senior Village. PNC has seen this item several times for different zonings, which includes R3, which is multifamily, and R1T townhomes within the past year. However, due to a substantial amount of opposition from surrounding property owners, the applicant withdrew their request before it had the opportunity to come before the council. Now, the applicant would like to rezone the property to single-family residential to be consistent with what's in the surrounding areas. PNC and staff recommended approval. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Dolores Euclid. My address is 2601 East 20th Street in the Olive Tree subdivision. I'm here to speak in favor of this change. This is what we have been wanting all along, you know, for it to be a residential area, to maintain the integrity of our neighborhood. I want to thank the planning and zoning for listening to our concerns, as well as City Council. Throughout, throughout the time when all of this started, this is what we wanted. We wanted to keep our neighborhood, you know, as residential as it was, we've always thought all along that it should be. So again, I urge you to pass this and to say yes to this change.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online?
I'm going to close the public hearing, Mayor.
Second. There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on this item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any questions for staff?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request for item number seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, and that carries ordinance number 5355. Next item?
Item number eight is a conditional use permit to build a drive-through service window. This would be at 209 North Sheri Road. This is a 3.1-acre track of land out of and forming part of, or portion of lots 184 and 194 Johnny Sheri subdivision, also known as unrecorded Lot 1 Sheri Town Plaza subdivision. It's currently Zoned C3 General Business. The applicant is Uriel Investments in care of Mario Reyna from Eldon and Hunt. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately 370 feet north of First Street, along the west side of Sheri Road. The site is currently going through the subdivision process. The applicant is proposing to construct a 5,475-square-foot commercial building with two suites and a drive-through service window on the south side of the building. Access to the drive-through would be via a 24-foot access drive that wraps around the building, allowing stacking of vehicles of, of up to five vehicles. Based on the square footage of the building, there's a total of 17 parking spaces required. The applicant is proposing 54, exceeding code by 37. Staff notes that they will have, they will be complying with all city requirements. PNC and staff recommended approval for life review, subject to compliance with all city codes, and the tenant must apply for their own conditional use permit. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number six, eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any questions or comments? Or a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as requested. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Is that 5351? No, that's 5356.
So I'm sorry, 5356.
Item number nine is a conditional use permit to build two drive-through service windows at 301 North Sheri Road. This is also in the same area, 301 acres of land out of and forming part of lots 184 and 194 Johnny Sheri, also known as unrecorded Lot 2 Sheri Town Plaza subdivision. It's currently Zoned Commercial, and the applicant is Uriel Investments in care of Mario Reyna with Eldon and Hunt. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately 600 feet north of First Street, along the west side of Sheri Road. The site is currently going through the subdivision process. The applicant is proposing to construct an 18,491-square-foot commercial building with nine suites and drive-through service windows on the north and south side of the building. Access to the drive-through window would be via a 24-foot access drive that wraps around the building, allowing stacking of up to seven vehicles on each side. Based on the square footage of the building, there's a total of 49 parking spaces required. The applicant is proposing 134. PNC and staff recommended approval for life review, subject to compliance with all city codes, and the tenant must apply for their own conditional use permit. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Anyone here that would like to speak in opposition or in favor of this item? Is there anyone online? Alex?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Are there any questions or a motion?
I'm going to approve.
There's a motion
Second.
And a second to approve the conditional use permit for two drive-through windows at 301 North Sheri as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0, and that's ordinance number 5367. Right?
5357.
5357, I'm sorry. 10, 10 ahead here, okay. Okay, next item?
Item number 10 is a conditional use permit renewal for the sale and outside consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is for Taco Palanca, located at 2420 East Interstate Highway 2. This is out of Lot 5, C Sheri and Place subdivision. It's currently Zoned Commercial, and the applicant is Eduardo Castañeda. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. Taco Palanca Restaurant is located a quarter mile east of Sheri Road, along the south side of Interstate Highway 2, north of Coles. It has an existing drive-through service window with access to the site through an existing off-site entrance located 42 feet from the site. The 12-foot driveway, drive-through lane runs along the south, south and east side of the building, which allows stacking up to five vehicles. The last conditional use permit for the sale and outside consumption of alcohol for this location was approved on April 26, 2021, for a period of two years. Days and hours of operation proposed are 24 hours every day. Employees, they currently have 50 employees in different shifts. For the sale of alcohol, this request is complying to Section 64, which requires that no alcoholic beverage be sold within 300 feet to a church, public school, private school, or public hospital. There are none of these uses within the above radius. Since this restaurant is more of a family-oriented venue, the sale of alcohol is not the primary intent or item of Since this restaurant is more of a family-oriented venue, the sale of alcohol is not the primary intent or item of purchase. Mission PD did not have any negative issues to report. Staff does not object to a longer period of approval. Therefore, PNC and staff recommended approval for life-of-use subject to continued compliance with all city codes and compliance with TABC requirements. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the conditional use permit? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online?
I'm going to close the public hearing, Mayor.
Second. There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number 10. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
I'm going to approve the conditional use permit for the life-of-use.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for the life-of-use. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. 5358. Next item?
Item number 11 is a discussion and action, if any, related to amending Appendix A of the city's Code of Ordinances, specifically Article 1, Section 1.2 definitions by adding subsections 13A, 13B, and 13C, which is BYOB, BYOB Establishment, and BYOB Permit. Article 8, Use District and Conditional Uses, amending Section 1.43 C3 General Business District, 1.44 C4 Heavy Commercial District, 144A C5 Adaptive Commercial District, 145 I1, which is Light Industrial District, and 146 I2 Heavy Industrial District to include BYOB establishments as a conditional use. And Article 10, Conditional Use Permits, amending Section 156 Conditions of Conditional Use to If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. A director from the city was giving to staff to look into BYOB establishments. Currently, the city does not have any guidelines or regulations for this type of establishments other than a business license. During a workshop held on August 14, the council directed staff to present an ordinance to the planning and zoning and to the council for consideration. This ordinance would allow businesses and commercial districts to apply for a BYOB under C3 Zone on all commercial zones. We're establishing definitions for what a BYOB is, which is bring your own bottle, beer, beverage, or booze, and establish a criteria. In this particular criteria, we, the applicant must reside within 100 miles of the city. The applicant must not have a conviction of a felony. Each owner of the BYOB must submit name and information for background check. If the applicant is a tenant, they must submit a notarized letter from the landlord consenting to the application. BYOB must not exceed three calls for service within 90 days. They may not allow members on premises, including parking lots, between the hours of 2:30 a.m. and 10 a.m. They need to present all their corporate information. Permit holder and/or representative shall be on the BYOB premises during all hours of operation. BYOB shall be, shall close between 2 a.m. and 10 a.m. daily and not allow persons to consume alcohol between 2:15 and 10 a.m. Proper signage for exits and where alcohol consumption may be permitted. No pollution such as noise or otherwise may travel beyond the immediate property line. Planning and zoning commission may impose additional requirements, including but not limited to increased open space, loading, parking, landscaping, and additional improvements like curbing and sidewalks, and any additional requirements suggested by the council. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay. Victor, do you have anything else to add to that presentation?
No, I think Suzie covered it all.
Okay, all right. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Or any comments? Anyone online? No? No? Okay, so the action item here is this, it's discussion and action, if any? Does that mean that we don't have to take action? Or are we recommending that we take action? Or does council have any questions? Oh, well, we need to close the public hearing.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item number 11. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Okay, now we can ask questions. Are there any questions? For staff? For Victor? Any questions?
No, I think it's more just, we're trying to establish some rules and guidelines for those businesses that allow alcohol consumption, where consumers bring their own alcohol, and it's just setting rules for that, right? I mean, that's all we're doing with this ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
That they mirror the same ordinance for the ones with license for alcohol?
Yes.
It is. Actually, this is more stricter than than the ones that have alcohol.
I do not mind making a motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the ordinance as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries 5-0. And that is ordinance number 5359.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think that concludes our public hearing. The next item is a consent agenda. Those items are items number 12 through 21.
Mayor, I'm going to approve the consent agenda for items 12 through 21.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Items number 12 through 21. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is approvals and authorizations, item number 22. And that would be Suzie.
Mayor and Council, item number 22 is a preliminary plat approval for Turtle Cove subdivision. This is a 7.417 acres out of Lot 33-1 West addition to Sherland. It's currently ZONE R2 duplex, fourplex, and the developer is Town and Country McAllen LLC. Engineer is Tramatt Consultants LLC. This subdivision is located 900 feet east from the intersection of Inspiration and West Mile 3 Road. The developer is proposing 25 duplex, fourplex lots. Wastewater Services will connect to an existing 8-inch sewer line located on the west side of White Oak Drive. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. PNC and staff recommended approval. Subject to payment of capital sewer recovery fees and park fees, provide water district exclusion, and comply with all other format findings. This item is now before you.
I'm going to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for Turtle Cove subdivision. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Next item?
Item number 23 is a preliminary and final plat approval for Palmetto's Cove subdivision. This is a 2.122 acres of land being a part or portion of Lot 22-1 West addition to Sherland. This is currently ZONE R4 Mobile and Modular Homes. The developer is Aaron Baye Jr., and the engineer is RO Engineering, PLLC. This subdivision is located approximately 360 feet east of Inspiration Road, north of Barnes Street. The developer is proposing one lot with 31 open spaces for RV development with two spaces to be designated for stormwater detention purposes. He is also requesting five different variances for this particular subdivision. Variance number one is a variance request from the R4 zoning, allowing the operation of a mobile home or recreational vehicle park within the limits of the city and be exempt from the required business license to operate specific park. Variance number two. It's a, they're requiring, the minimum size of a tract for a development into a mobile home subdivision shall be five acres. He is only, he only has 2.122 acres. Variance number three is to have, to accept lots and spaces less than the minimum square foot and width allowed for mobile home sites. Code requires a minimum of 5,000 square feet with 50 feet width of inner lots and 6,000 square feet with 60 feet width for corner lots. The lots within this development will be an average of 1,600 square feet with widths of 32 feet. Variance number four is a variance request from the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 54, manufactured homes, mobile homes, recreational vehicles, and parks, requiring a recreation area to be a minimum 5% of the gross area. This development will not include a recreation area as specified. Variance number five is a request, variance request from Section 98, 134 Streets to allow a design and proposed construction of 28-foot right-of-way whereas the code requires street width within the city emission to be at least 50 feet. They will, they will have city water and city sewer. PNC staff recommended denial based on the requirements or based on the subdivision code. However, planning and zoning recommended approval. Most of their recommendation was because this track is probably the only track that is R4. At one point, it used to be ZONE R5 in 2013. The previous owner rezoned it to mobile and modular homes. This item is now before you. The applicant is here. If you have any questions.
Hello, how are you all doing? My name is Aaron Baye. My address is 1624 East Griffin Parkway. I've been in Mission most of my life since '76. I've graduated high school from here. I've had, I won a few businesses here in the city of Mission. Really happy to live in the city of Mission. Now moved from the city of Mission. Let me tell a story about the little piece of property. It's a very unique piece of property. I think it's the last piece of property in Mission that was zoned that way. It was maybe forgotten on that side. Apparently, the previous owner was trying to develop it, had issues. Never finished. That piece of property had holes everywhere. Grab, we didn't grab it, but I think the city still had problems with this, with this, with this property. When I did a little research, I mean, it was zoned, it was our, it was for mobile homes. Like I said, it was very, it's a very unique piece of property. It's the last one in Mission. And you can only do so much with it because it's 2.7 acres, real, real narrow, real long. It's been there for such a long, well, it's been there forever. Now, I did a little research. Right in front of us, it's a mobile park. I don't remember the name of the, we have mobile homes right next to it. We have a mixture of mixes. Mobile home, frame houses, apartments, all the way around. There's a little bit of everything everywhere. So, I mean, this is what I came up with. See, it was zoned that way already. This gentleman never finished the project. It was, now what I'm gonna do though, I'm gonna promise you I'm gonna do a really beautiful place out there. Enough lighting. We even exceeded the square footage that used to be the, the, what they required to be a minimum for a small mobile home or whatever, it was 1,500 square feet for a trailer park. So I'm doing more than that. Now, everything else is pretty much into track. I mean, I did a little research. I mean, the track should be in the front. Everything's gonna be beautiful. I wanna keep it out there, and I don't want, like I said, lighting, I wanna have enough lighting. It'd be accessible to the park. We're close to the park. I just don't know what else to say. Any questions? Like I said, this is a very unique piece of property. It was left there. Basically, when the change of ordinance or whatever, it was left there. I know it's supposed to be five acres, but we forgot about that little piece of property that we didn't. So if you have any questions, and I'm here. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or?
What is the reason for denial, your recommend?
Normally, in subdivision, it would still be able to comply with the R4 zoning, except it wouldn't, it would be less lots than what he is proposing.
So what's the variance?
The variance is, one, he wants to, this particular zone requires that the lots be for, for mobile homes and to be for sale. What he's wanting, and the variances that he's wanting is, he doesn't want to sell the lots. He wants to be able to rent out spaces. So, and the only way to, to be able to help him out would be through a variance, through establishing all of these variances. The previous owner was proposing to do, if I'm not mistaken, about 16 mobile home lots, but the subdivision never got recorded. So he sold the land as is, and what he is proposing, he was thinking he would be able to mirror what Circle T, which is across the street from him, which has an R4 but was done before, before they amended the R5 code, which allowed what he's proposing. The code got changed back in 2007, if I'm not mistaken, where they, where they rescinded, actually in 87. It got, the R5 zone is no longer in existence, and that's what allowed what he's proposing.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So I know of certain properties that we have here in Mission that rent out spaces for trailers. One particular behind Peter Piper and one over here off of Old Diddy 3. On what is that street? You go into La Cuchilla. There's a trailer park there that you, they rent the lots. Is it comparable to that, or are they still smaller? Like what he's requesting, does it already exist in the city?
It exists in the city, but those subdivisions were done prior to, to the adoption of the, the R4 code. So they do exist. They do exist, but they were there prior to.
And this is a one-lot subdivision? Is that correct?
It's gonna be a one lot.
Okay.
One lot, and he's proposing 31 spaces.
31 spaces.
And two for detention.
Okay. And so PNC allowed all of the variances?
PNC approved it based on, it's basically the only track available for R4 that ready for development, in other words.
Okay.
That didn't get developed.
Okay.
But it has the zone, it used to have the zone back in the 70s of R5, but in 2013, the developer, the new developer changed the zone to R4.
Yes.
He never finished the subdivision.
Right.
That's what happened.
Right.
And now, Ms. Sotero, your question, the lots that I'm gonna do is almost twice as big as those trailer parks. Those were built a long time ago, so their lots are very small, and you have issues. It's a very small lot, so I'm gonna move doing twice as big as those lots.
Mayor, I would like to approve the recommendation of the planning and zoning committee.
Okay, and allow the variances?
Allow the variances since it's the last.
Sarah?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat of Palmetto's Cove subdivision, allowing the variances 1 through 5. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item?
Item number 24 is, is a consideration of approval of a resolution establishing a six-month moratorium on the issuance of any new or renewed building permits, business licenses, food permits, conditional use permits, and certificate of occupancy for the construction or operation of businesses designated to operate game halls, including, among others, eight-liners and/or similar types of gaming devices, poker clubs, BYOB establishment, and/or social clubs or other similar operations. Recently, staff has seen an increase of business license applications for this type of businesses. And currently, the city does not have guidelines or regulations to follow. So what we're asking is, if the council considers this resolution, it'll give time staff to work on, on, one, having workshops with the council to see if this is something that they want to see in the city, and two, coming up and comparing with the other cities, what are they doing to regulate or follow, prepare guidelines for this type of uses if it's the intention of the city to allow them in our city. So what we do is, for six months, we would not be accepting any applications for any of this type of uses.
Okay. All right, are there any questions or recommendations?
All right, are there any questions or recommendations?
I'll make a motion to approve the moratorium.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the six-month moratorium known as resolution number eighteen forty-eight. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Mayor, I have a question for Ms. Suzie.
Yes.
So how many do we have right now in the city?
As far as businesses?
Uh huh. That have already passed? Like what happens with them? They continue to?
Well, one, the business, most of the businesses that we currently have have a license for a specific use.
Okay.
Like say, for example, if it's a restaurant, the business license is for the restaurant. But as we've noticed, they've incorporated this other time of gaming that is not part of the license. So that's why we want, we want time to, one, to be able to, if the cities, if the council is inclined to approve them, okay, then what guidelines do they need to follow? And that's the whole purpose of this. Most of the people that have this type of, don't have a permit for that specific use.
So are you sending staff out there to make sure and to check, and then we're gonna be citing them, or what's gonna happen exactly?
That is something that I would need to get, one, with PD to see how we are, how we can monitor to actually track. Some of the, some of the businesses, we know they have them and they may, they have been made aware that we're looking into something because we don't know, one, if the council is gonna allow them, and they might end up having to remove them.
Okay.
But I don't think we can enforce due to our lack of regulation, right? I mean, at this stage?
I'm assuming that's a question for me.
Yes, sorry.
Yes, Councilman Flores, so in that sense, like Suzie was saying, a lot of these businesses are operating in conformity with their business license, which is a restaurant or a laundromat or whatever it might be. Now, these accessory uses that they're having, you know, it would have to be a case-by-case basis and figuring out how much revenue, like, are they still really operating as a laundromat? Are they still really operating as a restaurant? So it would be that case-by-case analysis that our office, along with planning, along with PD, we'd, we'd work on, but for right now, this resolution says we're not processing any applications for full-on-out BYBs, poker rooms, all, all the things that were enumerated in there.
Okay.
I think for me, Mayor, as part of, I guess, the research and in six months, I'd like to see what other municipalities are doing and maybe get with Chief Torres and with the Sheriff's Department and see, you know, how that is. Because I understand gaming is around and other municipalities have it, but they're not supposed to be paying cash. It's supposed to be like a gift, there's other different things. But for me, I mean, if it's illegal, it's illegal. And so I am kinda leery with that, especially with this BYOB in neighborhoods and just different things like that. So I hope that you all do your due diligence to get the research so we can make the best decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Yes, yes, Chief, sorry.
Not a problem, not a problem. Good evening. Again, item number twenty-five, again, the fire department seeking approval of clinical affiliation agreement between the City of Mission Fire Department and the EMS Training School LLC doing business as School of EMS for the use of clinical sites. Again, the, the clinical site shall provide the School of EMS students with practical experience in EMS-based patient scare activities through the clinical site owned entities and the School of EMS and shall provide the student with academic experience. Again, staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the agreement between the City of carries unanimously, five zero. Next item?
Yes, ma'am. Item number twenty-six, again, the Mission Fire Department seeking authorization to enter into a mutual aid agreement with TransStar EMS LLC for EMS provider services. Again, the agreement shall remain in effect for a period of two years unless canceled by either EMS provider by giving, giving thirty-day written notice. Again, staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the mutual aid agreement with Star EMS. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Mayor, I have a question for Chief Garcia. Currently, right now, we have several EMS providers, so how would it be on the list? Because I see that there's one more after this.
Yes, ma'am. So what we're trying to do again is prepare as we transition over to make sure we have enough in our rotation in case we get, you know, a lot of calls come in. So it, it'll be a list that will be rotated through, through dispatch to make sure everybody gets an opportunity to respond very mutually. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Next item?
Item number twenty-seven, again, Mission Fire Department seeking authorization to enter the mutual aid agreement with Skyline EMS Incorporated for EMS provider services. Again, the agreement shall remain in effect for a period of two years unless canceled by either EMS provider by giving a thirty-day notice, written notice, and again, staff and city manager, she recommends approval.
Okay.
Move for approval, Mayor?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the mutual aid agreement with Skyline EMS. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Next item, Chief Torres?
Good evening, Mayor, Council and Mr. City Manager. I'm in item number twenty-eight, authorization to re-enter into a contract with Carlos Ortega for Municipal Court Prosecution Services for the City of Mission. The City of Mission Police Department is requesting, respectfully requesting authorization to enter into a contract with Carlos Ortega for Municipal Court Prosecution Services for the City of Mission. The contract identifies the scope of services and other contractual terms and agreements. The contract is for one-year contract commencing on October first, twenty twenty-three and ending on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The contract amount is for sixty thousand for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Mayor, I wanted to see if possibly, I had a couple of questions. I wanted to see if we could take this into executive session.
Okay. Do you rescind your motion?
I'll rescind my motion.
Okay.
Yeah, we can add this, we can table this for now, and we'll discuss it in executive session under five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, which is legal matters to the contract, maybe.
Okay. Do we need a motion to table?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to table?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to table the contract with Carlos Ortega. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item?
Item number twenty-nine, authorization to enter into a contract between City of Mission and SafeTrack LLC doing business as Safe Global Services to provide professional services. SafeTrack LLC DBA, Safe Global Services will provide a number of security intelligence services to the City of Mission as it relates to our proximity to the U.S.-Mexican border and the need to be aware of any potential threats to our international bridge, our border and our community. SafeTrack LLC will also provide transportation and security services for safe business travels in Mexico. The total amount of the yearly contract is fifteen thousand, six hundred. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the contract between the City of Mission and SafeTrack. As presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Chief?
Item number thirty, authorization to renew the contract with MLG Protection Services for Security Guard Services. MLG Protection Services currently provide security services for Spear Memorial Library, city events and other city departments as needed. The current contract expires on October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. The current rate is eleven dollars per hour. For this upcoming term, the rate will increase by three percent to eleven thirty-three per hour. The new contract term begins upon approval and expires in August of twenty twenty-four. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the second and final one-year renewal with Security Guard Services, force Security Guard Services with MLG Protection Services. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next item?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item number thirty-one is authorization to rescind approval of a budget amendment in the MDC fund. The, this budget amendment was for ninety-five thousand in expenditures to allocate funds for shade structures at the MDC Food Park. The amendment was approved by City Council on May eighth, twenty twenty-three, but the amendment will not be presented to the MDC Board for approval. For reconciliation purposes, we are asking City Council to rescind the approval of this budget amendment. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay. No per approval?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to authorize and rescind the approval of the budget amendment for ninety-five thousand dollars for MDC for shade structures. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Item number thirty-two is the acceptance of the June twenty twenty-three tax collection report. The total adjusted twenty twenty-two tax levy was twenty-nine million, thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents, and the amount of collections as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three is twenty-seven million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents, which represents ninety-six point zero-five percent of the total twenty twenty-two tax levy. The total adjusted delinquent tax levy is two million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-three cents, and the amount of collections as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three is four hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-six cents, which represents nineteen point fifty-eight percent of the total delinquent tax levies. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
May I see the other slide before this one? The one that is just what is that total collected?
The prior, prior.
Can you? That one.
So on total taxes, we collect twenty-nine million dollars?
That's the total adjusted levy. The collections is the twenty-seven million, eight hundred and eighty-five, four hundred and eighty-nine, ninety-five.
As of June?
As of June thirtieth, yes.
That's who we collect a hundred percent of.
And the outstanding is the one point one?
Correct.
So thank God it's a small percentage on delinquent taxes?
Yes.
Yep.
And Ms. Angie, would it be possible for maybe you and Randy can get together to have our, the agency that took over for the taxes come and make a presentation of how it's going?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the tax collection report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item are the June twenty twenty-three financial statements?
Yes, item number thirty-three is approval of the June twenty twenty-three financial statements. Total revenues for the month were six million, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and one dollars, and total expenditures were ten million, seven hundred and three thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, leaving an ending adjusted fund balance of twenty-four million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Mayor, I would like to recommend approval, but I also would like to see if we can have a workshop to go over all the fund balances that we have for the city. I don't know how soon we can have that.
Second. Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve the financial statements as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Want to schedule that right now?
I mean, we can, I mean, it's not something that is certain, but I think you'd be, you have a little workshop on that.
Right after the approval of the levy?
I don't know.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Next item, number thirty-four, Mr. Terrazas?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to come before you to present item thirty-four, approval of resolution number eighteen forty-nine, establishing a commitment to participate in the Texas Department of Transportation Construction Project, describe as the safety improvements, traffic signal at mile two on Holland, Stewart, and mile two on Glasscock, also mile two on Bryan, Los Ebanos and Griffin Parkway, and First and Conway. The parties shall be responsible for utilities, environmental assessment, and mitigation, architectural and engineering services, construction and right-of-way. The project will consist of installation of traffic signals at the intersection of mile two and Holland, mile two on Stewart and Glasscock, and the improvements of existing traffic signals on mile two and Bryan, Los Ebanos and Griffin Parkway, and First and Conway. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve resolution eighteen forty-nine as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item, Ms. Mugia?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item number thirty-five is the authorization to award agent of record. The City of Mission accepted nine bid responses, and staff is seeking City Council direction.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to award this bid to Lone Star Insurance Service as presented today from all of our presenters.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to award Lone Star Insurance Services, definitely? As an agent of record, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no?
No.
No.
Okay, I'm gonna vote no, only because I feel like there's, there's some discussion that needs to be done.
I, I agree, and that's the only reason I voted no, Mayor, and I would respectfully make a motion to table this item, seeing as how we had the presentations today, there is some, still some questions I'd like to ask, ask staff. If I can just kinda review that and get my questions in order and then become better informed, I think I, I'd rather do that. So I'd, I'd like to make a motion to table this item.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to table the item, to award the agent of record. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no?
No.
Are you?
I'm okay with tabling it.
You're okay with tabling it? Okay, so the, it's a four-one, and in favor of tabling the item. Okay, next item?
Item number thirty-six is the authorization to award International RX Services. After careful evaluation and assessment, staff is recommending we award to International RX Services for a three-year term with two one-year renewal options. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do we go out for this?
Do we want to, do you want to?
Proposals.
Do you want to table this item as well?
I would like to review it, too.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'm going to table the item.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to table the award for the prescription services. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item?
This item is a discussion and action on the proposed twenty twenty-three tax rate. Take record vote and schedule public hearing. So in accordance to the Texas Property Tax Code, City Council must propose a tax rate for the City of Mission and publish the notice of property tax rates by September first. This notice provides information about tax rate use. In adopting the current tax rate, the new, the non-new revenue tax rate would impose the same amount of taxes as last year if you compare property taxes to both years. In most cases, the voter-approved tax rate is higher, tax rate, and the tax unit can adopt without holding an election. If the proposed tax rate exceeds the non-new revenue, but does not exceed the voter-approval tax rate, one public hearing is required before the adoption of the tax rate. The calculation of the non-new revenue tax rate is zero point four seven four six per one hundred valuation. The calculated voter-approval tax rate, not, not adjusted for unused increment rate, is a point zero, zero point five one nine zero per one hundred valuation. The calculated voter-approval tax rate adjusted for unused increment rate is zero point five two seven six per one hundred valuation. The current tax rate is a zero point five two nine nine per one hundred valuation. The public hearing is scheduled to be on September the eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Discussion and action of the proposed tax rate, take record vote and schedule public hearing. At this time, we are recommending to approve the voter-approval tax rate adjusted with unused increment at a rate of zero point five two seven six per one hundred valuation. That is a slight decrease from our current tax rate at fifty-two ninety-nine. I recommend that tax rate to be considered for a tax rate and take record vote.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'm moved to approve.
Okay.
Second.
And also the, to schedule the, the hearing for September eleventh?
Correct.
Yes, okay. All in favors, oh, well, we have to take a record vote, so Ms. Jessica?
Aye.
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 Okay, the, let the record show that it's a five-zero vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, just briefly, Mr. Pettis, on this item, it's, we're gonna have to, even though the rate went down, we're gonna have to publish in, in the newspaper saying that there's been a rate increase. Is that right?
Based on the publication, because of the no new revenue tax rate at forty-seven, forty-six, you are correct. So our overall tax rate is, is decreasing at fifty-two seventy-six, however, because of the no new revenue is at forty-seven, it auto-published as an increase.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Have before you item number thirty-eight, which is approval of interlocal agreement between City of Mission and Sherreland Independent School District. This is for the use of the nodulatory facility at Vanworth Park located eighteen twenty-two North Sherre Road, and Mayberry Pool Facility located at one hundred and fifteen South Mayberry Road by both Sherreland Independent School District, junior high schools, and both senior high schools. This agreement is for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year at a cost of eighteen thousand, three hundred dollars. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agreement between the City of Mission and Sherreland Independent School District for pool use. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. And the next item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item number thirty-nine, approval to engage with the contractor to repair SCADA system program at the water plant, to engage control network plus a sole-source supplier of Q2 cellular devices to repair a SCADA system. The total cost is a hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. ARPA funds will be utilized for this expenditure. This expenditure will be under the general exemption, section two-five-two dot zero-twenty-two of Texas Local Government Code, a procurement necessary to preserve or protect the public health or safety of the municipality's residents. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the contract to, to repair the SCADA system program. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Next item is unfinished business. This is a tabled item.
I move to remove from the table, Mayor.
Oh, there's a motion.
Second.
And a second to remove the item from the, the rezoning item from the table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number forty is a rezoning for a tract containing point thirty-six acres of land situated out of the south, one half of block fifteen dash eight of the west addition to Sherreland, a portion is fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, and fifty-seven, and further being out of lot sixty-one of the unrecorded Melba Carter subdivision. This is from R-one single-family residential to R-two duplex, fourplex. The applicant is Martin Vega. If the Council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of Melba Carter and Mayberry Road. Surrounding zones include industrial to the north and east, and residential to the west and south. The future land use map shows this area as industrial. This subdivision has been considered several, has considered several rezonings in the past ranging from commercial, industrial, and residential. It is staff understanding from the surrounding residents and City Council that they would like to keep these areas residential with the exception of the lots off of Conway, which are already zoned commercial. Staff notes that the proposed zone does not comply with city's future land use map nor surrounding land uses. They did have public opposition, even as of today, I have residents calling against the request. Staff and PNC recommended denial. This is, oh, this is the number of our applicant. This item is now before you.
Are there any questions?
I'm moved to approve the denial.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to deny the request as presented. All in favor to deny the request, say aye.
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 What's that?
Are you voting?
Yes, I'm voting. I'm voting no to that request.
Okay, all right.
So then, so it's, the vote is to approve PNC's denial, correct?
Right, yes.
So I vote, I don't want to do that.
Okay, all right, all right. So, all right, that being the case, it is a four one vote. The item is denied. Next item is routine matters. City Manager comments?
Yes, ma'am, a couple of comments. We do have tomorrow, Tuesday, August twenty-ninth, from nine to eleven. We are partnering up with the RGV Food Bank for food distribution in Nellto Park. Again, that's from nine to eleven. Also coordinating with Starbucks for their ribbon cutting on Wednesday, August the thirtieth, at nine AM here on Conway. And also, we're scheduling for next week a McDonald's, we're partnering up with McDonald's Restaurant, and Coffee with a Cop is September sixth at seven-thirty AM on the Sherre location. And then also, the following Friday would be Music at the Park from six to nine PM September the eighth. And City Hall offices will be closed Monday, September fourth, in observance of Labor Day. However, we do have staff on call if needed. That's all I have.
Okay. City Council comments?
I just want to say for everybody, I know that it's barely Monday, and we have next Monday's Labor Day. Everybody just have a safe, long weekend.
Okay, thank you.
No comments?
No comments.
No comments, Mayor?
No comments.
Okay, I don't have any comments as well, so we'll move on to executive session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to go into executive set, session pursuant to government code five-five-one point zero-seven-four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
I, I just want to announce, I, I do apologize, but I do want to introduce our new cemetery director, Ms. Mary, who's here with us. She was, has many years' experience. She was overseeing the cemetery prior to the city taking over. They was independent before, and so now she's joined us again, so thank you, Mary.
Welcome.
Also, Mayor, I'm sorry, I do want to introduce our, our new internal auditor, Mr. Jose Luis Silva. He is, joined us recently as well. City Mission has, I believe, has not had an internal auditor ever, and so I do want to introduce Mr. Silva, who's joined the team, comes with us with a lot of experience, certified internal auditor, certified examiner, and certified government auditor. So, welcome, Mr. Silva.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to go into...
I make a motion to on table? Oh, yeah. Come back.
There's a motion and a second to go into open session, go back into open session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. And I need a motion to on table.
I'm... I'm... More adjourned. I'm more adjourned.
Yes, second.
There's a motion and a second to remove from the table the item at number twenty-eight. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Is there a motion?
May I like to make a motion to go ahead and approve number... The contract for Mr. Carlos Ortega on our prosecutor?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to reenter the contract with Carlos Ortega on for municipal court prosecution services for the city of Mission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you everybody. Now, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I want to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody.